Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Allegheny County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, prayer, or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Jared, please take role.
Ms. Bennett. Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco. Mr. Dewar.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi. Mr. Fadulis.
I'm here.
Ms. Hallen. Mr. Klein.
Here.
Ms. Mas-- sorry, Mr. Macy.
Yeah, here.
Thank you. Ms. Nakareti-Javkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio. Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Getena.
Here.
We have nine members present at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Chief Executive, we have your quarterly address.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council. Giving my last address brings a lot of emotion and a lot of nostalgia with me as the last person who was elected in the new former government 24 years ago, the last one to leave. It comes with a lot of, again, a lot of nostalgia, a lot of emotion. 12 years I sat there in the seats you sit in, and now 12 years as executive. I wanted to bring tonight the folks, the directors and the deputy directors, who have really served this county so well, not just during my 12 years, but before that, many of them, and will into the future as we continue to move forward. I'm going to call these directors and have them stand as we go through. I'm going to do it in alphabetical order, starting with Administrative Services. Jess Garofalo, Jess, if you are here, she would stand up. Jerry Testkevich held that position for many years, and then Jess has done a fantastic job in running that administration, the Administrative Services. You may remember, one of the very first things they had to deal with was a court-ordered reassessment when I first came into office, and they held nearly 20 town hall meetings, helping people get through that very, very difficult process. They also established a marketing role for the county as we market our courthouse and our courtyard for special events, weddings, our parks, those type of things. They did a lot of work with the Veterans Administration, including the rapid rehousing boot camp, which was lauded by the White House a number of years ago for the work that they had done. And then, obviously, last but not least, the elections. Allegheny County has become the gold standard for doing the elections under the new, you know, elect-by-mail process, and I want to thank Jess and her team for the great work that they have done. Next, Budget and Finance, led by Warren Finkel, Mary Soroka, and now Tim Cox and Adam Lentz. We've talked about this a lot, and obviously, I gave the budget address just a few months ago. You know, increasing the fund balance by over 1,500 percent, the unassigned by over almost 900 percent, increase our cash position by 600, over 600 percent, reducing the health care cost by over $200 million in that time. The bond rating and credit rating is the highest it has been in Allegheny County for 40 years, and they've saved over almost $80 million refinancing debt. And the biggest thing I think all of us can thank is for the last 12 years, there has been no tax increase. The mileage is the same as it's been, so property owners are paying exactly what they paid 12 years ago. Next, Children's Initiatives. Becky Merkatoris, that's kind of the new kid on the block. That's a new department that we established, and we appreciate you supporting that initiative. This is really about helping our kids, getting them ready for school. And what Becky and her team are doing are working with our childcare facilities around this county, some of them private, some of them nonprofit, partnering with local universities, continuing to do so many things. And I know that's something the next administration's talked awful lot about, the things that they want to do. So I want to thank Becky for coming on board and being with that. Next is Communications, and that's Amy Downs, certainly no stranger, the Director of Communications. You may know that today is her day. We named her the Day of Allegheny County as Amy Downs. Every one of you have worked with her for the last 12 years. Anytime anything happened, a road closing or some emergency, Amy was always getting the word out about what was going on, certainly elections again, and so many other things that we have dealt with. Next is Community Relations and Special Projects, Darla Cravada. Darla has been our voice out, working with all the municipal partners, working with Connect and ALOM and so many different groups, also building so many trails throughout Allegheny County, both within our parks and with all of our municipal partners. She was a big part of getting that final gap, the Great Allegheny Passage, that 150-mile trail that we go from Pittsburgh to DC just a few years ago. Her work on sustainability, working with Sustainability Department has also been critical. The County Solicitor, Andy Zeffey, obviously, now Judge Zeffey, not here, he started, and then George Janosko. I know George isn't here, but we can't say enough about the work George, over four decades of serving this county in the County Law Department. Those that work in that step, work in that stage, know how important he is. And now Rosalyn Guy-McQuirco. If Rosalyn, when you would stand up, certainly big shoes to fill, but the Law Department has really done a great, great job over these years, keeping Allegheny County on the straight and narrow. Next, Court Records, Mike McGeever. I want to thank Mike and what he has done with electronic data exchanges, taking the Board of Viewer Files that we provide to the AIU, partnership with our expungement clinics. We'll talk about that in a little bit with the Public Defender's Office. Marriage licenses, now that people can get online. And then, Mike also instituted that you can get your passports and license offices at night and weekends, so we can serve our folks better, that they don't just have to come 9:00 to 5:00 during the business day. Next, Economic Development, Simone McMeans. If Simone is here, if you'd stand up. We've had Dennis Davenport, obviously, became Secretary Davenport, Bob Hurley, Lance Chimpka, and now Simone. We talk about economic development a lot. It's been a prime part of my administration. Lowest unemployment we've had in 40 years. We have 40,000 unfilled jobs. We've seen neighborhoods that had been left behind, Likee's Liberty and Lawrenceville Strip District, our airport corridor, some of our Mon Valley communities that are coming back. They've just done a tremendous job of helping to keep our young people. We know what we've done with the census. We've talked about that before, what they do with the vacant property program, working with housing. They've just done a tremendous job. Next, Emergency Services, Matt Brown. Those of you that work with Matt and the EOC and the 911 Center, texting to 911 is an initiative that they brought to bear a few years ago. The full merger of the 911 of all 130 municipalities that have come on board, and then anybody that's been, and I know many of you have toured the new 911 Center, that state-of-the-art facility that Matt helped bring on board and move into place. Swift Water, we're the first 1A certification in the state of Pennsylvania. They train over 5,000 fire academy students every year, obviously, running the Emergency Operations Center when we have flooding and other catastrophes that happen. And the work, again, they do is something we can all be very, very proud of. Next, Equity and Inclusion. The former MBE/WBE program was formerly Ruth Bird Smith, Lisa Edmonds, if Lisa is here? Oh, there she is. Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa. We renamed this to make sure we have a broader focus on the things that we do. The counseling sessions that Lisa and her team do help with certifications. We now have over 570 firms that are certified currently in this county, and they can become part of the contracting process, not just with the county, but with other municipalities, with the state, with our authorities as well, so that we can include so many firms that have been left behind historically that are now part of it. And what Lisa does is very, very helpful to make that happen. Next is Facilities Management. It was formerly, Doug Nolphy was doing that, Mark Saunders. Mark, is Mark here? He retired. Okay, Mark did retire. I didn't know if his last day was last week, but anyway. That used to be under Public Works, and we broke that up. That was an initiative that Jen and Willie had recommended, and again, this body was willing to do that. And what we've seen with our facilities, really, again, breaking it away from Public Works was really helpful. They've helped with an awful lot of the reducing waste and utility, better management of our resources, going to sustainability with lighting and heating and water retention. Water usage has reduced. They were the ones that oversaw the roof replacement that we went through a couple years ago after 130 years. And again, the work that they've done in the law, Family Law Center, courthouse renovations, really, people have pride in our facilities, and they've done a tremendous job. Next, Health. We started with Dr. Karen Hacker, who's now the Director of the CDC down in Atlanta on communicative chronic diseases. Next, we hired Dr. Deborah Bogan, who led us through the pandemic when Dr. Hacker had left, and now Patrick Dow. Patrick, are you? And Patrick's done a fantastic job filling in as Deborah. Dr. Bogan was named the Secretary of Health, and this is probably one of the departments I'm proudest of, the change that we've been able to make during these 12 years. We launched Livwell Allegheny, which now 70 municipalities and 19 school districts are part of, 55 restaurants, 37 workplaces, and 236 community partners are part of that, making us a healthier, healthier place for folks to live. The lead level testing that they've done, increasing the amount of children who are tested for lead, was so, the initiative was so positive that Governor Wolf modeled that and how he did it with the state across this Commonwealth. Over 5,000 people have been trained on how to respond to the opioid overdose, and nearly 200,000 Narcan kits were distributed last year alone. They've done 280,000 immunizations, 73,000 patients are seen in our dental clinics, and obviously, we know what they did during the pandemic. An unbelievable job with testing, getting information out on a daily basis, and then the vaccinations we were able to get to the citizens here in Allegheny County. And again, I've talked about this before, but the air quality reduction, the air pollution reduction we've had over these last 12 years has been monumental, 80 percent reduction in air pollutants, and making attainment three years in a row. And by the way, we're going to make it again this year, because the air is actually better than it's even been those last three years that we did make the EPA designation. Human Resources, Kathy Kennedy and now Laura Zaspol. Is Laura here? Again, a lot of innovation that has happened in the HR department, as Laura switched to online applications where people can apply for jobs much easier, much focus that Laura and her team did on employee training and development. We have had virtual career fairs that they've been able to do, and I'm proud of this, working with the manager and Laura, that the first administration in many, many terms to not have one layoff, any layoffs during my term in 12 years, and consistent pay raises for our folks throughout the year. Human Services. This is also another, Erin Dalton. Erin, if you'd, excuse me, if you'd rise. Mark Chernoff, obviously, former DHS Director, now Erin, doing an unbelievable job as she deals with some of the most difficult positions and different problems and challenges that we have in this region. Nationally known for the analytics, Erin was actually invited to speak at the National Board of County Executives a couple of years ago, talking about some of the groundbreaking things that we are doing with algorithms and analytics, you know, with CYF, Drug and Alcohol, MHMR, our Department of Aging, and the great work, and obviously, the homeless challenge that Erin continues to work on with all of our partners. Next is Information and Technology, Jason Ditzemberger. Jason, our IT Department, again, doesn't get a lot of credit, because they just do the work, and they get it done. Before, we had Joe Gavlick, who was here. Joe ran that division for a number of years, and now Jason. And we'd established this new department under this administration a couple of years ago. Again, thank you for the help that you've been able to do. They expanded the use of GIS, 23 MAP applications published just in the last year alone, and they also work on the election system, working on to ensure security and redundancy, to make sure that our elections are fair and free, and make sure people are secure in what they do. Next is the Jail, and we have Shane Deity, Acting Warden. Orlando Harper had been the warden for many, many years. He instituted a lot of great programs, particularly around job training, so that when people came out of jail, they could enter a job with the exit state certification, test for renovation, repair, save, serve, save, and more, providing naloxone provided upon release, along with the test strips for xylamine and zy, lazin, and fentanyl. The NCCH studies on suicide prevention has made a major, major improvement along those lines, and including the mortality rates that have continually come down over this last year, the one of only three that are accredited in the state of Pennsylvania in partnership with AHN to provide medical care to our inmates. Kane Living Center, Dennis Beyond, though. We know what Dennis and his team have been able to do in a very difficult, changing environment when it comes to specialty care. They opened some specialty care units for memory care, dementia, psychiatric needs, substance abuse, and meet the needs of this region. Obviously, what happened during COVID, they were able to really do a great job in trying to protect our seniors, the most vulnerable part of our population. Some of the innovative partnerships and efforts to improve resident outcomes included rapid testing, isolation protocols, visitation rooms, telemedicine, and more, and others used that as a model for what they did. And people may not know that, but they are continually listed on Newsweek's list of America's best nursing homes in this country. So it's something that Dennis and his team can be very, very proud of. Medical Examiner, Carl Williams. I don't know if Carl is here. He is?
Mandy.
Oh, Mandy? Yes, thank you. Dr. Williams has been the medical examiner throughout my entire administration. He was actually in a prior administration. The automated notification of death investigations to media, including updates in cause of death and manner. Initiated family assistance improvement that provides more detailed information on cases tested, conducted, and included that. Continues to provide detailed and timely information on opioid and other substances. And Carl will be retiring, he'll be retiring in February after many, many years of service. Next is Parks, Andy Beckley. This is probably, again, one of the things that your constituents come in contact with more. One of the things I'm probably proudest of in my 12 years is the improvements that Andy and his team have made in our county parks. We have 23 million people, 23 million visits who come to our parks every year. Obviously, some of them come more than once. But what they've instituted when it comes to sustainability, rain gardens, the improvements of our shelters, our facilities, our skating rinks, the pools, the ski slopes, the golf courses, wedding pavilions, Hartwood Stables, the facility upgrades, turning two of our parks into net zero, the trails, and again, just the quality of life that has been provided by the Parks System and the Parks Foundation, they've just done an unbelievably great job. They instituted a Park Rangers program that we never had before. Those Park Rangers have become real ambassadors for people, particularly young people, that want to learn about, you know, some of the vegetation, the trees, excuse me, the animals, the wildlife that live in our parks. And it's such a great asset that they've really taken it to the next level. Next is Police, Chris Kearns, Superintendent Kearns. Formerly, we had Charlie Moffett and Coleman McDonough. Chris has done a wonderful job and very helpful to all of our municipal partners who we work with, that created a CERT certification on Child Abuse and Response Team, the unmanned aircraft system use, the body-worn cameras, and other things that Chris and his team have instituted. Again, been very, very instrumental in helping some of our other police departments. Public Defender. We've had three, Elliott Housie being the first, and he's now Judge Housie, Matt Dugan the second, and now Laura McWilliams. Laura, is Laura here? She would stand. You know, we've seen a big reduction in our jail population since I've been in office. It was like 2,700, I think now it's about 1,500 or 1,600. A lot of it occurs, because we have public defenders who are visiting right away to people who get incarcerated and don't have the ability to hire a lawyer. They also instituted Project Reset, in which they've done over 2,000 expungements for individuals, many of them who did not have the resources to be able to provide that expungement that allowed people to get jobs and housing and other opportunities to improve their lives. Project Rehabilitated with over 200-plus clients, they assisted with warrants cleared, the in-house continuing legal education, and a truly robust training and recruitment program that gets people from some of the best law schools across the country is something Laura and her team can be very proud of. Next, Public Works. We had Steve Johnson and now Steve Shanley. And with Steve, we've talked about this before, in the years that we've paved over 80 miles of road, which is a goal that we need to do according to the Civil Engineering Standard, and Stephen has done, and his team have done that. I can't remember once in which the county was criticized for our snow removal and ice removal during some of the severe winter storms we've had. His team's been out there and just gets on it. We talked also about the 72 bridges that, when I came into office, were poorly rated by the Civil Engineering Standards. We're going to be down to zero after the budget that you all folks passed. And then, the final thing that's going to be happening, that actually did happen on light-up night, and we're going to be doing more of it, is the Sisters Bridges lighting, the Clemente Bridge, the Warhol Bridge, and the Rachel Carson Bridge. And after the five years of doing those sister bridges on New Year's Eve, we're going to finally open the final bridge, the Roberto Clemente Bridge, and now all three bridges will be open for the public. The landslide portal work that Steve's done, just again and again, the great work that they've done. And last but not least, Sustainability. We had Janine Zappa, Kathy Roboski, and Brittany Prishak. Is Brittany here? Under this administration, we've had 11 percent reduction in carbon emissions in our county facilities, a 20 percent reduction in water usage. We're the first government to sign on to the green building challenge for our buildings to reduce carbon output by 50 percent by 2030, the electric gas-powered county fleet that we're moving along, 43 acres of parkland, which are now meadows. We planted over 12,000 trees in our parks throughout the system. Again, I talked about the two parks that are now net zero, the hazardous waste, hard-to-recycle program that we do with all our paper and other materials, over 400,000 pounds of materials that otherwise would have gone to a landfill that we recycle, including over 600,000 pounds of cardboard, mixed paper, composting, and then, last but not least, the hydropower plant that's being built on the Emsworth Lock and Dam that will allow us to get off of fossil fuels and powering our buildings that we do. And last but not least, and I didn't mention these folks, but I want to bring them up. I want to bring up my Chief of Staff and the County Manager, who's done such a great job over, the first hire that I had, Jen Liptak. Jen, would you please come up here? I want to, you know, those of you that are old Steeler fans, you may know, when the Steelers turned things around about 50 years ago, their first draft choice was a guy by the name of Joe Green. Jennifer Liptak is my Joe Green. She doesn't look like Joe Green, and she doesn't throw the.
I'm making disagreements.
But she was. And when I got elected 12 years ago and was taking office, Jen was the first person, I'm sorry, I stole them for County Council, but she came across to work in the administration that she has put together. And the second person I want to bring up is former County Manager Willie McCain. Willie, I want to bring you up here. He didn't remember how to get to the Gold Room. We had to tell him, because he's been gone for a couple of weeks. But, and then, last but not least, Steve Polarsky. What these three people have done over these last 12 years, assembling that team that you see out there, and the pride that people have now in our parks and in our roads and in our elections, and again, the human services, I could go on and on. I can't tell you how lucky I am to have been the County Executive, to have these folks who every day wake up, sometimes I wake them up pretty early, and they get to work on behalf of the people of this county, and I cannot thank them enough for the work that they have done on behalf of the citizens of Allegheny County. So I would like you to give them a toast. Willie didn't know, he didn't have his tie on today, so we had, the dress code we have. Anyway, I want to have Jennifer to say a few words, because she has really put this whole thing together. We won't call you Mean Joe Green, we'll just call you Joe Green, Hall of Famer Joe Green.
I don't know, want to know what people call me behind my back. I'm sure it's very colorful and entertaining. So, if I may, I'll just take a few moments. As a lifer in government, I cherish the moments that I get to spend working and doing the work of the people, and people don't even know. People don't even know what we do. And that's the most satisfying part of the job, is you can go out into a park and can see something get done, or there's a program that's announced, or people talk about something they experienced within government, and you just sit back and listen, because inside, you know that that was something that we were all a part of, and it's very satisfying. I can say that my last 12 years with Rich have been some of the most engaging, challenging, exciting, and rewarding and fulfilling times of my life. I've learned and grown so much, and I really would like everyone just take a moment and think about where we were, where we've gotten to now, and now the basis of where we're going to go. It's amazing. And it is credited to him allowing us to work. He allowed us as managers and Chiefs of Staff and Directors to do our work, and that's not really precedent. It is unprecedented that we are permitted to just think, create an environment of thought and excitement and good work. And for that, I was very proud of to be a part of something where he let the experts work, and I think we all enjoyed it. So I'd like to thank you on behalf of everyone for just being you and being great, and really allowing myself to elevate to where I am today, and allowing the rest of us to come along for your ride. It's been a great one, so thank you, Rich.
Open up any questions any of you may have.
No questions, I'm going to sit down and get out of this.
Mr. President.
Mr. Walton.
I don't have questions. I'm going Executive Fitzgerald, but I want to offer, on a personal level, platitude, appreciation for the leadership that you provide. I've got the privilege of representing County Council District 10 for the last eight years, and it has been a real honor, it has been a real opportunity to try to share with the folks that I represent how government works, and how government can really work to solve problems. And I attribute a significant level, the overwhelming majority of that level of success in solving problems to you and the people that you've put in office. You know, whether it was Willie, Jen, and Steve, or Patrick Dow, or Director Shanley, or Lisa, or Darla Cravada, the residents that I represent on a day-to-day basis have an improved quality of life as a result of the leadership and the openness with which you run the government. Part of what Jen just said, that you put folks in place and you authorize them to do their job and solve problems, and that's what we've been able to do. Just last week, I called Patrick Dow, and two of my boroughs said they had a problem getting Narcan for their police departments in the amounts that they wanted. I called Patrick, Patrick said, "Have the folks called me? It's done." It's that kind of leadership. Working with Willie and Steve and Jen, and man, it's crazy. It's been a privilege. Darla, thank you. Rich, you gave Darla the opportunity to solve problems from Wilkinsburg and Edgewood, getting sewage, stop being dumped in a Little League field. It's that kind of leadership, it's that kind of support. Man, look, the county's a much better place today than it's ever been, and it's a result of your kind of leadership. Thank you for being a leader, thank you for being a friend, thank you.
In this role as at-large Councilman and County Council, this whole public service thing has been new to me, coming from the private sector, being in sales. But there are a number of things that happen over the course of your career that stick out. And one of the things that sticks out for me is you called me the day after I won the primary back in 2015. That's seven months before I was going to be elected, but you called me, congratulated me, and we got together a week later for coffee. You told me that when you wake up every day, the first thought in your mind is, how can you take and create jobs for the people of Allegheny County? And on that, we came to agree. In the entire time, the eight years that I've served on County Council, you have never failed to answer a phone call from me, a text message, or any of the questions that I've had. You've directed your staff to work with us. And as a member of the minority party here in Allegheny County and on County Council, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. While we've disagreed on some things over these eight years, I believe you've always treated me and the people I treated me and the people I represent with respect, and I think that that's something that the future administration and all administrations should emulate as we move forward. Rich, I can't thank you enough for the leadership you've shown Allegheny County, the friendship you've shown us, and your service to Allegheny County and all the people here on county council. Thank you.
Councilman Duer.
Hi, Rich. Hello.
Councilman.
Hello. As the resident young person here that...
I used to be that 24 years ago, but we won't go there.
Rich, when you took office, I was 16 years old.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I say that because, you know, I hear you speak all the time about the work you have done, and I look out at this room, and I know firsthand, having served on this body the past four years, you know, the work that the people in this room have done to, you know, improve this county and to make it a place where young people want to come to move to and to stay. And, you know, I'm incredibly grateful to have been one of those young people. And, you know, when I sat, when I, for some godforsaken reason, decided to run for this body four years ago as a 24-year-old, I will say, very few people took me seriously because I was a 24-year-old running for county council. But one of the first people who I met with was you. And we met and we sat down and talked about all of the things that you had done on county council, the work that you were working on as county executive during your first two terms, and the things at that time when you were running for your third term, about the things you wanted to accomplish during these past four years. And during that, during that meeting, Rich, you know, the thing that you said to me then, and the thing that, you know, tonight has even, you know, more come to light, and every, anytime you've talked about any success this county's had, is you, you mentioned it as a team. You know, this isn't you doing these things, this is the collective whole. And I echo the sentiments of Councilman Walton and Jen and Willie, you know, it's putting these outstanding public servants in place and letting them do their job, which sounds easy, and then you get into government and you realize that it's often not. And I just want to say, it has been, and, you know, it's been a true pleasure and a true honor of my young career getting to work in partnership with you over these past four years. Same thing, we haven't always agreed, but we have done, I think, some really great things for this county, and it's been a true honor to me to be a very, very small part of that team. You've left this county in an infinitely better place, and I think at the end of the day, you know, when you're an elected official, that's truthfully the only thing we can do, is we can leave something better than we found it. And you absolutely have done that with Allegheny County. So I hope you can go home, take a rest after this, and rest assured that you have done everything in your power to make this county a better place to live for everyone, and especially my generation. So thank you very much, county executive.
All right. Thanks.
Do you want to go?
Yeah.
I really don't have any comment right at this moment, but Rich, I want to let everybody here to know that Bob Macy, myself, and Sam will be doing a proclamation for Rich, and I'd like to have you all stay for the proclamation that we're going to give Rich. Thank you.
Do we just want to move into that at this point? Let's just do the proclamation at this point.
May I just say one word as well?
I'm not ready.
1-288-3-23.
Before proceeding, please let the record reflect that Ms. Bennett, Mr. DiMarco, Ms. Filiagi, and Ms. Hallam are now with us. 1-288-3-23, a proclamation recognizing and honoring County Executive Rich Fitzgerald for his contributions and successes in Allegheny County, sponsored by council members Katina, DiMarco, Bekowski, Filiagi, Pritzio, Duer, Palmieri, Fatoulas, Nakarati, Chappkas, Macy, Walton, Klein, and Paul Messina.
Well, first, I'd like to thank all the directors for being here this evening as well. You know, at one point, I thought you were here for me. But I want to thank Jennifer, and Willie, and Steve. You've been great at working with you guys, and I hope to see you stick around a little longer. And Jennifer, you're more like my daughter than a worker, that's for sure. So that's our relationship. So I want to talk about a little personal relationship between me and Rich, take us down memory lane a little bit. I mean, I want to stand up here and tell you how wonderful you are, but we'll get to that. So my journey with Rich started in 2007. I had run for county council, and I had a big party at the Harmer House, over 300 people, and Rich showed up to support me the very first night. Most of the pictures were him in the bar, if you recall, but we did have a great evening, and that's how it's kind of been as far as him and I. On December the 4th, you know, I ended up taking office a month early, and I had to be here for the drink tax the first night. It was December 4th, 2007. Rich told me to get a new suit, get a tie on, he says, "You're going to, you got to go vote for the drink tax." I said, "But I don't take office until January." He said, "You won the special election for the Republican write-in," and I have no idea how that happened, but I figured my opponent would have at least tried to finish her own term. But anyhow, I showed up, and of course, you guys probably all know that I have a liquor license, a bar, restaurant, and there was no way I was going to vote for that. So I ended up going on TV for about three days, and radio, and newspapers, and after the third day, Rich called me up, he said, "Are you going to shut up, or what?" So I listened to him, I did. I kept quiet because, you know, I figured, okay, I beat that drum long enough, and news media is what it is. But I get this phone call from Tony DeLuca, and he's hysterical, a state representative. He couldn't stop laughing. He says, "Fatoulas, I thought you were going to be a quiet guy." He says, "You're on every news channel, newspaper, radio." He says, "Marty Griffin," he says, "I can't believe it." He said, "I had no idea." Well, quite frankly, I didn't either, I was a quiet guy. But that time, you know, we got past the drink tax, and Rich, I sat next to Rich up here on council, right up here, and he became my mentor for county council. He taught me how to be a councilman. So we spent countless nights at Mitchell's, having a fish sandwich and a beer after our council meetings, and we all got together, all the council members, Republicans and Democrats, and we all enjoyed our personalized versus council. And we had a more personal relationship back then. I'd like to see that again, council members, because I think it's very important for us not to just sit up here and legislate, but to be on a more personal basis. So it was the 2012, Rich is sitting up there at that chair, and he said to me, "Nick, I'm going to run for chief executive." Well, it took me about a half a second to tell him I was his guy. I supported him instead of Mark Flaherty, and I had flak from Mark Flaherty telling me that elections have consequences. And I said, "Well, if that's the case, I'm going down with the ship." I said, "Because Rich is my friend, and if he wins or loses, I'll still be his friend." And that's the bottom line. Now he's running for office, and before you know it, I'm getting phone calls at 6:00 AM in the morning. He's talking about current affairs, and I'm like, "Rich, do you know what time it is?" And I'm sure there was many other people, I heard that, I'm not sure if he got up at 4:00 in the morning, 5:00, but he took a shave, shower, coffee, pulled out the newspaper and computer, and he knew all the current events, and at 6:00 AM, he's telling me about everything. And I'm like, sitting on the edge of my bed, my wife's going, "Who in the hell's calling you at this time in the morning?" I said, "It's Rich." So I heard other people were getting the same phone call, that's for sure. And then came the endorsements. That was another episode with us. I brought my motor home because I was up for election, and to the endorsements, and Rich had brought a caterer with chicken and ribs. And we went into the endorsements, and he spent all day in there with the people promoting himself, and I didn't have an opponent, so I'm drinking, eating, having a good time, throwing paper airplanes, you know. So with the end of the endorsement voting, Rich decides to come outside, get some air, and he wanted to get a bite to eat. Well, I had told him, "Rich, I got good news and bad news." I said, "You know them chicken and ribs you were passing out?" He goes, "Yeah." I says, "Everybody thought they were mine." "Bad news is, I told him it was yours when we ran out." Remember me telling you that? That's the truth. Well, that evening, I was standing next to you, Rich, when the announcement came down who won the endorsements. The numbers were so close, I didn't know who won. And a couple of seconds later, you looked at me and said, "I think I won." And it was like, what, four votes or something? Just four votes. Flaherty called it a virtual tie, but Nick, Rich's name appeared on the ballot as the endorsed candidate, and that was the bottom line. He worked very hard as the underdog. He told me, he taught me that you run hard, you run scared, no matter whether you have an opponent or not. And he certainly out-campaigned his opponent, and it showed up on Election Day. It was somewhere around 7:30 at night, I got a phone call from Rich. He said, "How many polls have you been to today, Nick?" I said, "I don't know, about 27, 30 or so." He said, "Did you see any Flaherty people, you know, at the polls?" I said, "No, all I saw was your family." I said, "You know, you got enough wife and kids that you covered half the county." And that's the truth. And it was at 7:30 at night, over the phone, he said, "I think I just won this election." That's when we all figured it out. And sure enough, here we are, 12 years later. Time flies, doesn't it? People like Dr. Martoni, John DeFazio, how could we forget those? I miss them people. I miss John very much. They were two men that were larger than life. Well, the last 12 years weren't exactly perfect. We had some rough spots, you know? The first rough spot we had was when our district attorney had asked for an extra million dollars in the budget. And Rich told me, and John DeFazio, he says, "Screw him, we're not giving him an extra million dollars." And John DeFazio's like this, he's rolling his eyeballs like this, and I'm rolling my eyeballs looking at John, and I said, "John, you got to talk to Rich." I said, "You can't make the district attorney mad." I said, "You know what happened to the Ori sisters, right?" I said, "You can't, you can't, you can't, you can't make the man mad." So they did, they sat down and they, they got things straightened out, and it was, it was a good thing because the district attorney needed new drug enforcement officers, and certainly Rich went along with it and said, "That's great." The next rough spot might have been a little, a little rougher, I'm not sure, it was a girl named Chelsea. Some issues had come down along the road, and you ended up having to write her a check for something that had gone wrong. And, I mean, she didn't even thank you. She didn't even give you a handshake. The following week, you gave her her car. You gave her your car, and she didn't give you a kiss on the cheek, for crying out loud. I mean, the last girl I gave her a car to, I married her. But we got past that. So I've been accused of being Rich's guy. I like to set the record straight, that's true. But what part of fixing every park in this county, what part of fixing all of our roads, what part of economic development, jobs, was anybody mad about? His legislation over the last 12 years was an easy vote. I mean, how could you not? Some of the biggest things we did was the Marcella Shell. Controversial, but let's face it, at Deer Lakes Park, we ended up with, what, 20 million so far? And another 80 to 100 million at the airport. We're building a new airport because of the Marcella Shell. I mean, these are things that have been accomplished. And something else that had got done, and I'm sure all of you guys are involved with this, because there were documentaries that were, came down about the different departments in the county, you know, about, about what they did in the health board, and the public works, and the new roof on the courthouse here. And when I seen all that, I thought to myself, wow, what a great idea that was for, for people to see what this county does in a video. It was a great thing. So he always talked about his directors, I'll be honest with you, he referred to you as the people that ran this show, and he just said it tonight, he referred to himself as a ribbon cutter a couple of times to me, and it takes a leader to know how to lead other people. So for that, you've been a leader for the last 24 years, and I want to thank you for that, and our friendship will continue onto the future. Thank you. Thank you, brother. You're next. Are you done?
No.
Ah, man, my turn. I need some visual aids. I come on to county council in not a regular way. There was an individual who held that position in District 9, and he wanted to run for another office. At that particular time, they had, you had to resign to run. From the time that I got here, Rich has always been a friend. But keep in mind, I didn't know politics from Adam. I come from the private sector, I came from the credit unions, the volunteers, the various different organizations that help others. And one of the things that resonated with me with the credit union movement is their motto was people helping people, and I've tried to maintain that. And then one of the guys that I kind of followed and watched was Rich Fitzgerald, because Rich was a person who helps others. Now, I have a little confession, and Rich is well aware of it. During his campaign, his first campaign for county executive, I supported another candidate. He was a little upset with me, but I had promised that person, when I first got on county council, that I would support him in any endeavor. So Rich and I did, we didn't fall apart, we just buried the hatchet, come back to do exactly what we have to do, and that's people helping people. So Rich never held animosities, resentments, a grudge, he was always there to help, and I admire that in him. Now, as far as the rest of you guys and ladies out there, because of his leadership, I believe, and because of your demeanor, you all have done a lot of work and helped me in many, many ways in the Mon Valley. And whether you all know it or not, I'm the most senior person on council, so I've been here through a council with Rich, as well as his term as county executive. So those are my feelings, my friend, and always will be, and I'll certainly go to him when he's on the SPC. You all know about that, I guess. Okay, we're going to give him a proclamation, and that proclamation begins with, "Whereas throughout the history of Allegheny County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, talented officials who possess great knowledge and determination exhibit exemplary leadership and contribute invaluable to the communities." Margaret Chase once said, "Public service must be more than doing a job efficiently and honestly, it must be a complete dedication to the people." That quote depicts the true essence of Rich Fitzgerald's character and his years devoted to serving who call this region home. And whereas Mr. Fitzgerald took the oath of office as Allegheny County Chief Executive on January 3rd, 2012, and he's currently in his third term and final term, darn. Over those 12 years, he worked tirelessly to manage the day-to-day operations of this county. And whereas, as county executive, Mr. Fitzgerald has focused on job creation and economic development. He has worked with elected officials at the federal, state, county, and local levels, as well as with community leaders in business, labor, philanthropy, to address issues that hindered growth. And he was committed to improving the quality of life of Allegheny County's more than 100, 1.25 million residents. And whereas the 220 census members have underscored, excuse me, whereas the 220 census numbers have underscored the success of those efforts, for the first time in...
For the first time in 60 years, the county's population grew over that last decade. Just as importantly, the area also was becoming more diverse. From 2010 to 2020, the county saw an 80% increase in the Hispanic population, a 72% increase in the 25 to 34-year-olds. Tom? Age group when the national average was only 11%. The increased diversity and vibrancy will continue to move this region forward. He has also advocated for social and economic equality within the community and its businesses, and has worked to ensure that government efforts, the government reflects the region's increasing diversity. And whereas, under Mr. Fitzgerald's leadership, sustainability became an important component of all the work being done. The county reduced its reliance on fossil fuels and continues moving towards using 100% renewable energy sources. He also committed to building capacity by investing in locally-generated clean energy hydro facility on Ohio River. When it comes to air quality, the county planted over 8,000 trees in the last decade, saw an 80% increase in air pollutants, decrease in air pollutants, monitored by the EPA, and has seen the county reach attainment over the last three years. And it continues to invest in alternative fuel vehicles and reduce building energy use. And whereas, he finalized a $1 billion investment to allow drilling at the county airport that will result in $500 million in revenues to the airport authority that can be used for economic development and paying down costs, and another $500 million in private investment for infrastructure in the corridor. The lease and the resulting revenues have provided the airport with the resources to be competitive in attracting airlines and other businesses to the region. Whereas, improving the financial stability of the county has been a homework of the administration. Through strategic and targeted actions, he increased the county's fund balance from the unacceptable $5 million when elected to over $50.5 million today. And I'm going to give it over to my friend, Sam DiMarco.
Whereas, as a result of that change in fiscally responsible budgeting, Standards &amp; Poor's and Moody's rating agencies gave the county its highest bond rating since 1983. That work allowed the county to invest in its infrastructure and ensure that sustainable practices and quality-of-life improvements were continued. And whereas, Mr. Fitzgerald also reduced the county's debt per capita and did so without increasing the millage rate or raising property taxes. As a result of these investments, county property values increased two and a half times, while taxes for the average homeowner remained the same over a 12-year span. And whereas, along with his successes in expanding the use of technology to better serve the county's customers and the government itself, Mr. Fitzgerald included the use of launching Allegheny Alerts, a special needs registry, text to 911, online employment, and economic development applications, e-signatures, and mobile and online applications for county service requests, emergency services, park trails, complaint forms, and more. And whereas, Mr. Fitzgerald is a graduate of Carnegie Mellon University, where he earned his bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering and a minor in business. After college, he left this area for a short time, but he didn't stay away for long. In 1982, Mr. Fitzgerald returned to Pittsburgh and founded a water treatment services and equipment company. He also married his college sweetheart Cathy and bought a home in Squirrel Hill, where he still resides. He and Cathy, a pharmacist, have eight children, six girls, and two boys. Whereas, in addition to statutory board appointments and memberships, Mr. Fitzgerald is also a member of the Board of the County Executives of America, the Remake Learning Council, and is part of the National Association of County Officials Large Urban County Caucus. And whereas, Mr. Fitzgerald is delighted in the county's progress under his leadership, but he would be the first to deflect credit. He believes achievement comes when we work together for the greater good of the county. And he says collaboration has been the secret sauce to solving the region's toughest problems. To that end, he focused daily on forming strong partnerships with elected officials at the federal, state, county, and local levels, as well as with community leaders in business, labor, and philanthropy. Now, therefore, be resolved that we, Allegheny County Council members, Patrick Katina, Sam DiMarco, Jack Batkowski, Suzanne Filiagi, Anita Prizio, Tom Doer, John Palmieri, Nicholas Vitois, Michelle Nakarati-Chapkus, Bob Macy, DeWitt Walton, Paul Klein, Robert Palmesina, and on behalf of the citizens of Allegheny County, hereby recognizes and honors Rich Fitzgerald for his contributions and successes to Allegheny County and to the enhancement of the well-being of the county citizens. We thank him for his hard work and dedication to serving the people of Allegheny County. This council wishes him the very best in his next endeavor.
Well, first of all, thank all of you for this wonderful proclamation and the wonderful words. And I want to mention one other thing, and I forgot. Joanne Forster is, Joanne here, please. I forgot Joanne. She's Director of Data Center that Willie created way back when, and all the data that we're able to use. Willie McCain had created County Stats. And I apologize, Joanne, I just, every once in a while, well, not every once in a while, we screw. The one thing I can tell you is, first of all, grateful. I am so grateful that the citizens of Allegheny County decided to entrust me for the last 12 years in leading this government. And I like to thank, with all those folks out there and some that weren't here tonight, we have created something that's better, a better place for jobs, a better place for quality of life, public safety, environment, again and again. And it really is the teamwork that we've been able to do, bringing people together, young and old, you know, working together. And it really, you know, when I ran, the speech I would give was about keeping our young people. It always frustrated me that, watching the Steelers on the road, that half of the fans would be Steeler fans. I mean, I'm glad we got fans everywhere, don't get me wrong. But the Anachas would always get this wrong. They would say, "Don't those Pittsburghers travel well?" No, those Pittsburghers left in the '80s and '90s and early 2000s because the mills closed and the jobs went away. And people were resigned to the fact that when their youngsters grew up and graduated from school, they were going to leave, they were going to go somewhere else. And too many grandparents didn't get to watch their grandchildren school play, or play a sport, or whatever it might be. And we've turned that around, we've changed that. We have opportunities now for young people, and it's all of you that helped make that happen. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart for these 12 years, and the 12 years before that, it's been a labor of love for 24 years, to serve in this government. And in my next endeavor, I look forward to working with all of you again. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Right on me, right here. Am I ready? One, two, three. Ready? One, two, and three. Ready? One, two, three.
All right, bye, guys. Thank you.
Oh, Mike.
1-288-4-23 is going to be held. So that leaves us 1-289-0-23, and that's to be right into the record.
That's a proclamation recognizing the 35th anniversary of the Center for Urban Biblical Ministry, sponsored by Councilmembers Klein and Walton.
Any public comment on agenda items?
We have several. First up is Marilyn Jenkins.
Hi, buddy.
Hey.
Hello. It's been a while since I was at a council meeting, and certainly not under these circumstances, but I know, really. My name is Marilyn Jenkins. I'm here as a private citizen. I am a resident of your president's district. And I'm here, just briefly, I promise to be brief, to encourage you to think about the future. I think that what you heard from Rich Fitzgerald was that leaders, good leaders, do not only do the right thing now, they lay a foundation for the future so that in the future, new leaders can also do the right thing. I am not here to say that any process that you may have had regarding reapportionment, redistricting, was handled incorrectly. I'm only here to encourage you to think about how to safeguard the future so that it doesn't go awry. So I am encouraging you to think about the possibility of adopting some new standards and a new process for how that redistricting happens. And I would encourage you to think about that, because I know you to be honorable people who are interested not only in doing the right thing now, but in laying a foundation for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next is Ruth Quint.
Hi, I'm here speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Greater Pittsburgh. The League of Women Voters has made redistricting reform a major policy priority in recent years. The National League of Women Voters introduced People Powered Fair Maps as a project a few years ago. And at the state level, Fair Districts PA is a project of the League of Women Voters of Pennsylvania. Today, I am here representing the League of Women Voters of Greater Pittsburgh to advocate for the passage of County Bill 12534-22, which would codify a standard process for reapportioning Allegheny County Council districts following a census year. The current administrative code leaves the county council map drawing process to be determined by the county council president, and the team appointed can be made up of members who have a clear stake in the determination of district boundaries. With elected officials drawing their own districts, there are always incentives to gerrymander and to use boundary lines to squeeze out a rival or protect an ally. The current code leaves the door wide open for this type of political maneuvering at the county level. The proposed bill would codify a consistent procedure in each redistricting cycle and would assign the drawing of maps to a commission appointed by the county council and made up of individuals with no ties to Allegheny County government officials. Each political party represented on council would be able to appoint members to represent their own party interest. And although the county council would retain the final authority to approve or reject the maps, these reforms would introduce important guardrails and transparency to the process. In the interest of codifying a process that moves county council redistricting towards transparency and accountability, the League of Women Voters of Greater Pittsburgh urges that Bill 12534-22 be brought to a vote and adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next is Susan Thornton-Lara.
Hello, my name is Susan Thornton-Lara. And I'm a resident of Allegheny County and have been a resident my entire life. I would like to thank Councilmember DiMarco and Councilmember Katina for sponsoring me to be appointed to the Board of Property Assessment, Appeals, and Review for the term to commence on January 1, 2024, and ending on December 31, 2026. I'm honored to be nominated. I would like to describe my qualifications to be appointed to the role of Board Member to the Board of Property Assessment, Appeals, and Review. I have participated in two county-wide reassessments in 2001 and 2012. I have data collected, mapped, and data-entered parcels lots and blocks across Allegheny County. I am a Certified Pennsylvania Evaluator, which is a license under the Appraisal Board, which qualifies me to value for taxation purposes. I was a state-certified assessor for Allegheny County for almost 20 years. If appointed to the Board of Property Assessments, Appeals, and Reviews, I will be honored to be the first assessor on the Board of Property Assessment, Appeals, and Reviews. I am qualified and ready to start working. I believe training would be minimal, and the learning curve would be small. I have worked, and I am knowledgeable of the assessment database. My knowledge gives me the ability to expedite appeal results. My interest on serving on the Board of Property Assessment, Appeals, and Review is to assist in making assessments fair and equitable. I have worked in the assessment field for over 25 years. I believe I will be useful in expediting appeal results. I do not have any conflict of interest in serving on the Board of Property Assessment, Appeals, and Reviews. Thank you.
Next?
Next up is Catherine Garfinkel. Next up would be Elaine Kramer.
Good evening, my name is Elaine Kramer. I'm from Mount Lebanon. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of three bills put forth by my Commissioner, Tom Doer, District 5. I support all three, and I encourage you to as well. However, I'll spend my time on Bill 12534-22, the reapportionment ordinance. To speak up for this, I'd like to take you into the Wayback Machine to November 8, 2017. Several of you were in office at that time, and I'd like to remind you of your votes that night on a bill about fair redistricting. Bill 1039117 was supported by Commissioner Klein. I spoke in favor of that bill that night, six years ago, and watched you pass it. That county council bill encouraged the state legislature to move two bills that had been blocked in committee for a very long time, and to give those bills a full public hearing, bring them to the floor in Harrisburg. Those two bills supported a process of fair redistricting for congressional and state legislative races throughout Pennsylvania. This body saw the importance of pressing our state legislature to support a crucial issue, important to every voter in the state. And you recognized the importance of fair redistricting. I'm looking now especially at Commissioners Katina, Macy, Palmieri, and Walton. Along with Mr. Klein and others no longer in office, you voted yes in 2017. You supported fair redistricting. I trust that you will be consistent tonight in your support for this crucial building block of good government when it comes to your own body, county council. I ask you to vote in favor of Mr. Doer's bill to provide Allegheny County with a uniform process for drawing council districts. Fair apportionment, fair districts, is still, as in 2017, fundamental to enabling citizens to have an equal voice at the ballot box. Thank you in advance for saying yes. Thank you in advance for saying yes.
Next?
Last up is Michelle Feingold.
Not here.
Nope. And that's it.
All right, moving right along. Approval minutes, 12885-23.
A motion to approve the minutes of the November 14th, 2023 regular meeting of council.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 12886-23, excuse me.
A motion to approve the minutes of the November 28th, 2023 regular meeting of council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 12887-23.
A motion to approve the minutes of the December 5th, 2023 regular meeting of council.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of appointments, 12882-23.
Approving the appointment of Susan Thornton Lara to the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review for a term to commence on January 1st, 2024, and end on December 31st, 2026, sponsored by councilmembers DeMarco and Katina.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Councilmember DeMarco.
I'd like to make a point of personal privilege here. As we all know, the Board of Assessments has a backlog of thousands and thousands of assessment appeals that need to be heard. And because of folks, they're already short-staffed, and folks are being term-limited and being moved off of that. And that's why I'd like to make a motion tonight to request a rule waiver to allow us to potentially vote on the appointment of Ms. Lara here if this motion passes.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I require two-thirds.
Yep. Hearing no discussion. Go ahead, take your roll.
On the motion to waive the rule, Ms. Bennett.
No.
Mr. Bukowski?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Doer?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittolas?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
No.
I'm sorry, that's a no?
That is a no.
I think it's no.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Palmessina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio? Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 12, Note 2, with one member not present. The motion passes.
Councilmember DeMarco, would you like to make the motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that the council approve the nomination of Susan Thornton Lara to the Board of Property Assessments.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Jared, please take a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve the appointment, Ms. Bennett. Ms. Bennett? Mr. Bukowski?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Doer?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittolas?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
No.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Palmessina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio? Mr. Walton? President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 12, one no, and with two members not present, the motion passes.
Okay. Unfinished business. Committee on Economic Development and Housing for the second reading.
An ordinance approving the sale of the county's interest in a three-taxing bodies parcel of property located at Glenn Avenue, Wilkinsburg, Pennsylvania 15137, identified as Block and Lot 232J155, for the sale price of $400 to Mr. Neil Straub, sponsored by the chief executives.
Councilmember Bukowski?
The Committee on Economic Development and Housing met on December 6th and affirmatively recommended this ordinance to council. I make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bukowski?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Doer?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittolas?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Palmessina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio? Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 14, No 0, with one member not present. The bill passes.
One Committee on Government Reform for the second reading, 12480-22.
An ordinance to the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania mending the administrative code of Allegheny County, Section 5-1009.08, entitled Paid County Holidays, in order to designate the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day rather than Columbus Day, sponsored by councilmembers Bennett and Pritzio.
Councilmember Hallam?
Thank you so much. Give me one second here. All right, the Committee on Government Reform met, and we sent this bill forward with a neutral recommendation. I would like to make a motion to approve. Second. Oh, sorry. We sent this one forward with an affirmative recommendation. I'd like to make a motion to approve. Give me a second.
Motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. And Councilmember Nakarati Chapkus, did you want to make?
I understand that I don't have the votes for the amendment this evening, but during discussion, I would just like to make a comment.
Okay. Very good. So the amendment's pulled done. So at this point in time, the motion's been made in second, and so we'll have discussion on the main bill. So is there any discussion? Councilman DeMarco?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. It disturbs me that this council, instead of focusing on the real problems that the people in the county have, such as homelessness, crime, affordable housing, and things of that nature, is taking up, you know, something from the woke corner of the crowd here, which is trying to strip away Columbus Day from the Italian-Americans here. For those who don't know, many people think that Columbus Day was set up solely to honor Christopher Columbus, but really, Columbus Day was created by President Harrison back in 1892 to recognize the Italian-Americans and their contribution to this country and the ingenuity that they put forth in helping build this country. It came in the wake of the largest mass lynching in the history of the United States of America. Many ethnic groups in this country in the past have suffered from mistreatment and discrimination, and Italian-Americans were one of them. You know, this holiday, again, which was created by President Harrison, which was recognized by President Biden, is recently his last year here. I just find it distasteful that, rather than trying to create another day to recognize indigenous people, that we want to take and strip away the holiday from Italian-Americans who've worked so hard and contributed so much to this country. It seems to me that this isn't about creating a day of celebration for Native American culture, but rather a day aimed at demonizing the European immigrant roots of the nation. You know, we would recommend, or I would recommend, finding another calendar day to celebrate Native American culture. And I'd also like to add that I, here on this council, voted to support the creation of Juneteenth as a holiday here in recognition of the contributions of African-Americans in this country here. And that was because I felt that that was a culture that needed to be recognized and rewarded with their holiday. And now I'm disturbed to see folks trying to strip away that same right from Italian-Americans. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Nakarati Chapkus?
Thank you, President Katina. I agree that a day observing those whose land we occupy and who were the original caretakers of this land that we call home is appropriate and long overdue. And generally, that has been found in the month of November. Pittsburgh occupies the ancestral land of the Seneca, the Adena culture, the Hopewell culture, and the Monahagahela peoples, who are later joined by refugees of other tribes, including the Delaware, Shawnee, Mingo, and Haudenosaunee. I hope I pronounced that correctly. And I think it's important to recognize the ancestral lands that we all reside on here today. So complementary to that, I was putting forth a proposal not to lose the recognition of the Italian-American heritage that many celebrate on what has been known as Columbus Day, rather than paying homage to a particular individual. So the amendment that I had set forth that I withdrew celebrated both the Native Americans, the indigenous population, as well as those who have traditionally celebrated the Italian heritage on this particular day. And so I would be looking forward to, in the new year, working on something for Indigenous Peoples' Day in November and would encourage my colleagues to work with me on that moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Councilman Walton?
Look. I applaud my colleague, Ms. Chapkus, for recognizing the need and to be more cognizant of indigenous people. And I think that's important. But I also struggle with the desire to take away from recognizing the value and the history of this nation. I think we, as a culture, are better built by addition as opposed to subtraction. And efforts that are put forth to build growing collaborative efforts, we're all better served. And as a result, I find it troubling to support this change. Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, President Katina. And thank you, Councilwoman Michelle Nakarati Chapkus, for thinking outside the box and at least trying to find some good out of this situation that we do know exists, that the indigenous people have perhaps not had the celebration that they do deserve for us occupying their land, no question. But I want to thank you for taking time to formulate that amendment. I'm sorry that it isn't going forward, and I was looking forward to working with you on that. And I thank everyone else who has spoken. I am an Italian-American. I am a third-generation Italian-American. I've heard that some people have other generations in their lives. We have a lot of Italians on council. We have a lot of Italians in governments. I know, growing up, and I'm sure you're going to take some heat at the Seven Fishes Dinner on Christmas Eve, because that's our big time to be together. And some people have their Thanksgivings where they have to face their relatives. Well, for Italians, it's the Seven Fishes Christmas Eve dinner. And your grandpap is chirping in your ear about what you've been doing and what you did to stop this, and mine as well. But there's a lot of Italian-Americans in Allegheny County. In fact, Pennsylvania has the third-largest by population Italian-Americans living within its borders. And Allegheny County, in counties in the United States, has the seventh-largest population of all the counties in the United States. We have a proud heritage. And I know, growing up as an Italian, whether it was Columbus for Columbus Day, and we were given our history lesson in a different way than they're seeing that today, than we are being given today, and what we actually know today. But that was the lesson we learned. And in my house, everybody who invented anything, the most important things, they were Italian. Alexander Graham Bell didn't invent the telephone. It was Antonio Miucci. Lee Iacocca should have been president. I mean, that's our heritage. So we are very proud, and I too am sorry that this council sees the need to take from one to give to another. That is not a celebration. That is, as Councilwoman DeMarco said, a demonization, and again, a polarization. So I ask members of council, and I pledge to work with you, Councilwoman Michelle Nakarati Chapkus, to develop a day in November to recognize and honor indigenous people. And I am encouraging every other member on council to work with us to make this a day of celebration for them. And we will work on the name for the October celebration that is appropriate. But that is my wish, and I will be voting no on this for those reasons. Thank you.
Councilman Doer?
Hello. Last time y'all get to hear from me.
Today?
Not today. Certainly not today. So coming into the night, I was going to support this bill, and I was going to support it regardless of whether Councilmember Nakarati Chapkus's amendment passed or not. But because I feel that there is still further discussion to do on this specific piece of legislation, at least from one of the members, especially because the government reform meeting for which this was voted out of committee and was scheduled functionally after the 48-hour amendment rule would have been in place. So Councilwoman Nakarati Chapkus wouldn't even have had a chance to present this amendment at that committee meeting either. I believe that this council deserves further deliberation on this topic and should respect the will of the other council members, especially those whom this is clearly a personal issue to, to have further discussion on this. So because of that, I will be a no simply on a procedural matter and hope that the council can return to this issue next year and give this further time and discussion in government reform and have the ability for all council members to present any potential amendments or changes to the bill as necessary. So thank you, Mr. Katina.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Councilmember Palmieri?
Mr. President, members of council. I'm going to pledge to you right now, I'll help you work on that new bill come next year. And I thank you for being so conscientious about things. However, I want to say, if this thing would have passed, my mother and dad would be rolling in their graves. Like some other Italian members of council here, I grew up in a culture, the Seven Fishes, that wasn't a stranger to me, believe me. The kids didn't like all that fishing, especially when we told them it was calamari, it was squid. Oh, jeez, that ended that. So we had to substitute a few different things at times. But nevertheless, I'm very proud to have been able to serve the people of District 6, all the people, but especially the Italian people that have voted for me time after time after time. I'm very appreciative of their support, and I'm going to be a no also on this issue. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilmember Fittolas?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't want to get deep into the discussion, but I'm just personally not trying to rewrite history to change a holiday. But I am receptive to the possibility of giving another day to the indigenous people in this county, but that's another discussion. But...
Thank you. Councilmember Klein?
You know, I was of one mind when I came in here this evening, and I have long believed that we ought to set aside a day to recognize indigenous people and their contributions to our culture. And of course, their lives were disrupted by the great explorations of this continent. But, you know, at some level, I don't believe that the achievements and the accomplishments and the contributions of Italian-Americans should be linked to Christopher Columbus. I mean, I'd be much happier with a Michelangelo Day or a Pavarotti Day, but that is probably not going to happen. I mean, clearly, history has shined a light on the reality of Columbus. And, you know, that has to cast a pall over the legitimacy of honoring him with his day. But I would certainly be willing as well to work with my colleagues here on council to find a different path forward. And I think that there ought to be a day when we recognize indigenous people and have a day to recognize them as well. But I think that, given the reality that there are many who view this very differently, and I'm paying attention, I would like more time to contemplate this, and we'll not be on board with it tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Yes, Councilman?
Go ahead.
I just want to say, thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to say, first, I did not, or this was not in intent to erase a full culture. This was strictly, as I said in the committee meeting, about Columbus and specifically Columbus and the holiday being named after. and the, and the holiday being named after Columbus, who did murder and participated in genocide and slavery and all other types of things that we definitely would not agree with today. And so it was not ever intended to erase Italian-American heritage, as I know that that heritage is, as other heritage, are very important to the whole. And so I thank Councilwoman Nakarati-Chappas for talking about creating something in November. I would just hope that that is also a countywide and, and holiday. I think the reason why folks have been seeking to change Columbus Day into Indigenous Peoples' Day is because there is no national holiday commemorating indigenous people who were the first people here.
Yes, it was.
And so while, of course, I'll be a yes on this, I do hear that this will probably not pass, and I do encourage and thank council for continuing this conversation in the next session, as I will not be here. I look forward to seeing what council comes up with. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Go ahead.
Just like that, and one other thing. I think it's a cautionary note for all of us. You know, the history of this country, the history of this world, has not been without, you know, failures or terrible things having occurred and happened. And things that we do today can't erase something that have, that may have happened in the past. And I think it's important that we recognize our history, both good and bad, that we try to learn from it, so that we can all be better moving forward. But I think when we try to project 21st-century values upon a 15th-century explorer, you know, we run into problems and things of that nature. So I appreciate the opportunity to be heard. I appreciate my colleagues' sentiments and understanding how important this is in regards to Italian-Americans. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Hearing no one else. Jared, the only thing I'm going to say is that I think you got your marching orders, and I think you'll have a lot of cosponsors for working on the next, whatever it is for Indigenous Peoples' Day, whatever we come up with. So, thank you. Go ahead and take the roll call vote.
On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
No.
Mr. DeMarco?
No.
Mr. Duer?
No.
Ms. Filiagi?
No.
Mr. Fittulis?
No.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Mr. Macy?
No.
Ms. Nakarati-Chappas?
No.
Mr. Paul Mary?
No.
Mr. Paul Messina?
No.
Ms. Pritcio? Mr. Walton?
No.
President Katina?
No.
Eyes yes, nose 12, with one member not present. The bill fails.
12534-22.
An ordinance of the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, Article 301, entitled County Councils, Section 5-301.03, entitled County Council Districts, in order to provide a uniform process for reapportionment of council districts within Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmembers Duer, Filiagi, and I believe Mr. Klein wanted to be added to this as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Hallam?
Thank you so much, President Katina. The Reform Committee met and set this bill out with a neutral recommendation. I would like to make a motion to approve and ask for a second.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Councilmember Duer?
Uh, yes, President Katina. Prior to the meeting tonight, following some of the conversation I had sent out, I had had some conversations with members about one particular small issue they had with this bill. And I had wanted to present an amendment to address those issues, specifically an issue in regards to the staffing of the bill. The original bill allotted for the option of two county-maintained, what would essentially be consultants, as an option for the commission to bring on. There was some concern about the administrative overreach or involvement with those two positions. And to be quite honest, in my head, those two positions would have been purely administrative in nature, helping run the meetings, following discussions with President Katina, Councilmember Bekowski, who, you know, really were adamant about those issues. I stripped that out of the bill in this amendment and put forward a compromise that would allow our, because this is a county council process, our staff to help with the running of the meetings, as I intended for those two folks to do, but still not be, still be insulated from the actual helping of crafting of the map itself, which was very important from the experts that I spoke with, insulating staff from that process. So because that amendment was introduced past the 48-hour deadline, we're going to need to waive that. But as the primary sponsor of this bill, having spoken with pretty much every single member about this, I would urge my colleagues to both support the bill, but also this amendment as the prime sponsor of the bill. I think it doesn't affect the bill's goals at all, and I think it actually makes it a little bit better in making sure that this is a county council-led effort from top to bottom, not involving the administration. So I would like to move to adopt Amendment Duer 1, or just, what, what, what do I do here?
I would waive the 48-hour rule first.
I would like to move to waive the 48-hour rule to consider this amendment.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion on waiving the rule? Hearing none. Jared, please take a roll.
On the motion to waive the 48-hour rule, Ms. Bennett?
No.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Duer?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittulis?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes, please.
Ms. Nakarati-Chappas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritcio? Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 13, nose 1, with one member not present, the motion to waive the 48-hour rule passes.
And I would like to make a motion to adopt this amendment into Bill Number 12534-22. And I also would like to thank President Katina, Councilmember Bekowski, for discussing this with me, and I'm glad we were able to find a semblance of compromise here on this particular issue of the bill. So thank you very much.
Second?
Oh, thank you.
Motion has been made in second, and I'll give you a second to see what the changes were.
It is, I will point them out. It is page number seven, and six and seven, it's the staffing section. As you can see, any mention of the two services of the agents have been stripped out. The only portions left in there is the county shall provide space for the commission to operate, and that county council staff will be helped with ministerial functions, including but not limiting to meeting notice publication, meeting recording, remote attendance by commission members, streaming or otherwise broadcasting commission meetings to the public. That is the only changes that, that happened in this bill, in this amendment.
Any discussion?
I'd like to be out as a cosponsor, please.
Okay. Any discussion? No discussion, let's take a vote then.
On the motion to amend, Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Duer?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chappas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritcio? Mr. Walton?
I would stay.
Just make, get him your abstention reason at some point.
And President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 13, nose 0, with one member absent and one abstention, the amendment passes.
Okay, so let's vote on the main bill. The bill is amended. Or is there any, you want to make the motion to vote on the bill as amended?
Uh, I'll make the motion to vote on, to approve the bill as amended.
Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Any discussion?
I, yeah.
Councilman Klein?
Yeah. Well, I, I'd just like to say that, of course, you know, what we're contemplating here seems to reflect a healthy reform measure. And a couple of things that we, you know, have to come to terms with at some point is that there has been, there has long been a cloud of suspicion that has hung over elected officials who have, over time, mechanically engaged in this practice of drawing the districts that they end up ultimately representing. And it is probably something that we could describe as self-dealing, and it's probably not very healthy, and it really does stifle transparency. I would imagine that between now and the next census, we will be getting a lot of help from people with expertise, those who understand the math, there is math here that is actually used in determining the fairness of district maps, people who are free of self-interest and political machinations that sometimes shackle independent thought. Much that is drawn in our politics today springs from the seeds of gerrymandering. And in this county, we have an opportunity to do better by those who have elected us to serve. And I think that with this measure that, that Councilmember Duer has championed, we have an opportunity to do that. So, thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Councilman Duer?
I will keep this very quick. I, I just, you know, if this passes tonight, this will be culmination of three years of effort on this bill. It's the one I've worked on the longest, and something that I would be incredibly proud to leave behind as one of my small pieces of my legacy on this body. I wanted to thank, you know, very quickly, the Public History and Law Center and the Brennan Institute for Justice, who were instrumental, and the experts I spoke with there in crafting this bill three years ago. I wanted to thank my colleagues. I've spoken with a lot of you about the importance of this, and I hope my, I've conveyed what I felt that all of the good this can do in, in bringing enhanced faith from the public for the way we conduct ourselves when it comes to redistricting in the future. And also, I want to thank, you know, all of the activists and groups that spoke up and helped push us across the finish line this last month. You know, there's so many people that came here tonight to speak on this, but Julie Zavon is just a force, and she has been, you know, really leading the charge in the community with this, helping get a bunch of community interest groups together to support this bill. And you've heard a number of them tonight, a number of them the past few months coming to speak at council about this and urging all of us to adopt this. So I wanted to shout out just those people in particular. This was not a singular effort for me. This took a lot of work to get to where it is right now, and I am truly appreciative of all of the stakeholders that brought this, was able to bring this to the floor tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fietolas?
Don't ever look down this way.
Okay. First of all, I support this bill. But I, I know we've been accused of what we call gerrymandering. I've been on council long enough to go through two of the redistricting here. We know for a fact that you can't split districts. Specifically, I have 16 or 17 districts, and you have to have them all. You can't take a half, like, like a state rep has a half of a community. Penn Hills, Plum, have a couple, you know, different state reps. So the, the process went well with our staff 10 years ago and council members, and it went well again this time with, Tom actually was the leader with the redistricting with, with Sam and others here. So it was done well, and everybody was in agreement to it on both parties, Democrats and Republicans. And so technically, what we're going to do is we're going to create a commission, and so we don't have to do it. And I think that's not a bad thing. I think it's a great thing to, to move forward, and maybe the state will recognize the fact that maybe they should follow us for a change, and let, let, let that be done correctly. Because I know they don't, and I don't know if the federal government does. I'm not sure, but I just know that a state, whoever's the majority, gets, gets to do the redistricting. So I do support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Nakarati-Chappas?
I would just like to say that this bill speaks to transparency and good governance and defined process, and for that, I am appreciative to Councilmember Duer and will be supporting it.
Councilman Klein, did you have something?
Oh, I, I just wanted to, there are some stalwarts in the room tonight. Annette, the League of Women Voters, Ron and Marsha Vandis, and Deborah Fioke's here as well, and they have also been, you know, foot soldiers who have been really beating the drum for many, many years. So thank you for all of your hard work as well.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Councilmember Bekowski?
My wife complains to me about how long it takes to get things done. And, you know, Councilman Duer is saying that, that this has been a, a long labor. And I have to remind my wife that things taking a long time is, is not a mistake, it's a, it's part of the process. It's the way things get done. And just even to reinforce that for you even just shows, you know, the efforts this evening to kind of, you know, fine-tune and make just a better product of what we have in front of us. So yes, things do take a long time. If you want decisions to be quick, we can have a dictator, and then things get done really fast. I kind of like the way we do things, even though it takes a little bit longer.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Councilmember Walton?
Historically, I've had a healthy dose of skepticism about how redistricting is done generally in this country. And while I still have some concerns that I, that
You ain't getting the one.
gives rise to pause, I, my belief in the work that folks like Mr. Vandis has done and been engaged in for over the, for the over 15 years that I've known him and worked with him on a host of projects, allays some of those fears and concerns, and believe that there is an opportunity to move forward. So despite those that, a healthy dose of skepticism that I operate with every day, I'm going to vote yes for this.
Anyone else this evening? Councilman DeMarco?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank you for the process that you put in place here when we initiated the redistricting and, you know, putting together a committee. And I'd like to thank Councilman Duer, who worked with myself as well as the other members of the committee, to try to come up with the best maps we could based upon the best practices we had seen, you know, conducted at the state and federal levels. In the past, I've always believed that folks that were accountable to the public were the ones that should be the ones to draw these maps, because the public then had a say. When I was in business, you know, you hear people talking about doing business with a handshake, but we did contracts. And people said, well, why do you do it with a contract? And that's because the contract will be in place long after we're gone. Any one of us who are agreeing to something could walk down the street, get hit by a bus. A contract says, this is what was agreed to, you know, prior. And, you know, for some of the things that I've heard, you know, recently, makes me believe that putting a process in place like this, where we're spelling it out, where everybody understands what it is, you know, where council is bound to it as well, isn't a bad idea. So I will be supporting this, Mr. President, and I want to thank Councilman Duer for his hard work in bringing this to the fore.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening, before we do a roll call? Roll call vote.
On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Duer?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chappas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritcio? Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 14, nose 0, with one member absent, the bill passes.
12812-23.
An ordinance of the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the provisions of Article 1013 of the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, entitled Political Activity, Accountability, Conduct and Ethics Code, in order to establish a mechanism for review and investigation of campaign finance reports filed by candidates for county-elected offices by the Allegheny County Ethics Commission, sponsored by Councilmember Duer.
Councilmember Hallam?
Thank you so much, President Katina. The Committee on Government Reform met on December 14th and sent this to the full council with a neutral recommendation.
I'll make a motion for...
So I would like to, I would like to ask for a motion about this bill.
Oh, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made in second and any discussion?
President Katina, so very, very quickly, the concept behind this bill, and folks will see two agenda items down, the much larger bill that I've been working on when it comes to reforming our Ethics Commission here in Allegheny County. This bill is a very small section of that bill. I introduced this bill as a separate piece of that, one because the revamp of the Ethics Commission is going to be a long, tireless effort. And I will talk about that once I get to 12888-23 and speak about that a little bit, because obviously, new introduced business now is just going to, you know, die in committee in the next couple of weeks. But I wanted to introduce this because when we passed our campaign finance reports, campaign finance reform earlier this year, and I was so appreciative that the vast majority of this council did that, with that, one of the enforcement bodies for those limits was the Ethics Commission. And we changed the wording of the covered persons a little bit and expanding their powers a little bit in that bill. But one of the things that I have heard from concerns about good government activists in the community following the passage of those limits and that law, and those laws, has been the timeliness of the commission to currently be able to address any concerns when it comes to campaign finance violations from the ACE Commission currently. I understand some members have some reservations about wanting to deal with this, and hopefully, my bill is a good jumping off point about the ACE Commission reform in its totality. Whether this passes tonight or not, I would hope that whatever bill eventually does come out for that reform, President Katina, that hopefully that this small piece is included in that. As I see it, as an important enforcement mechanism for timely enforcing the limits we passed earlier this year. I would like to pass this tonight, just so we are prepared for 2025 when these limits will come into place. That'll be the first county cycle where these limits have effect. And I believe firmly that the complete overhaul of the ACE Commission, if the next council takes this up, will stretch long past next year. And that is not a criticism of how fast this body moves. It's just a note of, I've started working on that, and I can tell you that's going to take a lot of work. So I at least would like to get this in place for campaign finance, to make it, the current version as effective as it can be. But do understand if some folks have reservations about wanting to tackle this in its totality. But I appreciate the ability to at least consider this tonight and make this, folks aware that this is an important change that needs to be made, in my opinion, as the crafter of those limits at some point down the line, if not tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Bukowski?
I guess this is a record for me. It'll be twice on one night that I comment about my wife.
Be careful.
Well, you know, as I said earlier, you know, I remind my wife that things in government move slow on purpose, that that's not a flaw, it's not a mistake. Things are by design to give the elected people responsible for these things really time to be deliberate. And oftentimes, there are unintended consequences to things that aren't immediately apparent, but that if are given just a little bit more time for some thought, or maybe a little bit more time to gather input from people who are really experts in the matter. Everyone's, I am familiar enough with everyone sitting on council to know that everyone here has good intentions in terms of good governance and transparency and trying to be open and ethical and honest and just all around generally good people. One of the concerns that, just in the world that we live in, and as Councilman DeMarco mentioned earlier, the reason why we put things in writing is so that they live on after us. And the things that we do here can have a tendency to be here when we're gone and maybe do things that we didn't really anticipate or mean. So where I'm taking a long time to get to is the world that we live in, not the perfect world, but the world that we live in. People use things for the wrong reasons. And we see it today with presidential impeachment inquiries. And I'm concerned that council should spend some time thinking this through to be sure that this doesn't become a weapon. And I would not like to see the Ethics Committee, the Commission, being turned into a, you know, a weapon like that. So I'll be a no vote on this in order to, you know, give council a little more time. As it's been mentioned earlier, this won't affect anything until 2025. You know, so we certainly have a little bit of time to be deliberate and thoughtful and consider, you know, potential other impacts of our actions.
Anyone else this evening? Hearing no one. Jared, please take a roll.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennet.
No.
Mr. Bukowski?
No.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
No.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chavkas?
No.
Mr. Paul Mary?
No.
Mr. Paul Messina?
No.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
No.
Ayes 7, no 7, with one member not present. The bill fails.
I didn't go into why. I mean, you and I know, you and I had the discussion on this already. So, Committee on Health and Human Services for the secondary, 12741-23.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the Allegheny County Code of Ordinances, Division 5, entitled Health and Sanitation Through the Creation of a New Chapter 560, entitled Right of Choice, sponsored by Councilmember Dewar.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes. This is, hold on, I'm awake here. This ordinance was considered and reviewed at the most recent meeting of the Committee on Health and Human Services, and it comes to council today for our full consideration with an affirmative recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been made in second and in third. Any discussion? Councilman Dewar?
Now, this is the last you'll hear from me. So, I wanted to thank the HHS Committee for...
I'm going to hold you to that, Tom.
Yeah, I know. Oh, no, I have to talk about the next thing. So it's not the last you'll hear from me. I'm really milking this last meeting for all it's worth. So, the, you know, I want to thank the members of the HHS Committee for considering this. It's pretty incredible that this really hasn't gotten any, you know, any press about it, given that if we were tried to pass this years ago, I think this would have been something discussed. You know, for me, setting forward a forward-thinking, potential policy that could come into play if Allegheny County or counties of second-class status individually are given the ability to craft their own laws regarding reproductive rights access, I think, is incredibly important in forward-thinking health legislation. And because of that, I would urge, in the interest of looking to that future, that potential future that may never come, I would urge that my colleagues adopt this tonight in preparation for that. But that's it. Thank you very much, President Katina.
Thank you. Councilman DeMarco?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, in looking at this ordinance, a couple of things pop into mind here. One, we're looking at what ifs down the future. And I would remind everyone that federal law supersedes state law, state law supersedes county law. So if the federal government passes a law saying something, or the state passes a law saying something, what we do here at the county level doesn't supersede that. And when I look at this, it could have been very simple. If you look at the first page, the second whereas, it says, "Whereas, it is the judgment of council that it is neither appropriate nor well-advised for units of government presided over by transient groups of elected officials to attempt to interpose their own belief systems between any individual and their healthcare providers in making the difficult decisions regarding such procedures." I would be supportive of that. But because of the two things that I mentioned here, one, again, we can't, we can't supersede state and federal law. For that reason, I can't support the legislation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Hearing no one else. Jared, please take roll call.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Bukowski?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
No.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
No.
Ms. Nakareti Chavkas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
No.
Mr. Paul Messina?
No.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
I'm conflicted. People are in all different directions on this. Yes.
Ayes 10, no 4, with one member not present. The bill passes.
Any liaisons this evening? Hearing none, moving on. New business ordinances, resolutions, 12888-23.
An ordinance of the County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, repealing the existing provisions of Article 1013 of the Administrative Code of Allegheny County entitled Political Activity, Accountability, Conduct, and Ethics Code, and replacing it with an updated Article 1013 governing the same subject matter and entitled Ethics Code sponsored by Councilmember Dewar.
So, Mr. Dewar, it's my understanding you're offering this bill solely as a starting point for future considerations, because obviously, as you and I have discussed, the ACE Commission needs a lot of work. So in light of this, I'm going to refer the Committee on Government Reform with the assumption that we're going to be reintroducing this next year for further discussion. And actually, there's going to need to be a lot of work done on this. But Councilman Dewar, go ahead.
Yeah, this is what I, President Katina, I was introducing this because this is all of the work I have done. And I would like to thank Mr. Barker for painstakingly working on this with me over the past few months. First off, to mention to the folks, the wonderful residents of District 5, that I was not resting on my laurels. I was working up until literally the very last meeting on all of this work. I believe, I started working on, taking a look at the Ethics Commission, following the passage of our campaign finance laws, and looking for ways to improve the ability to enforce those. When I dived into that, I fell down a rabbit hole of issues that, a ton of which needs fixed. At the very least, I will say our ACE Commission needs a new coat of paint. At the most, I will say it needs a complete overhaul to make it more transparent, the folks who, more transparent, the process more defined, the recommendations from those commissions more defined as well. It just, overall, it's, I think it was one of those things where this county, when this county government was created, was an oversight. So I'm hoping that this bill can serve as a template and a jumping off point for this council to begin to have those discussions. And I'm hoping, some of the colleagues I've had discussions on this already, President Katina, Councilman Filiagi, Councilmember Klein, can help lead those discussions as you guys head into the new year, considering this my goodbye present. And that's it. That's it. I'm Dewar out. Thank you. So...
Notification of contract, 12...
Hold on. Comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, on this, Mr. President and members of council and the audience, one of the things that I'm concerned with, and it may be part of the process in this particular committee, but I would recommend that we have people from the ACE Commission be there to interact with us, to get a good understanding of what their roles are, what their thoughts are, and so we can massage and make the best piece of legislation we can regarding a organization to make some decisive decisions. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could, may I suggest that before this legislation, or any more legislation gets introduced in changing the ACE Commission, that you consider appointing or putting together a small committee of bringing in former members who have served on the ACE Commission to hear them out based upon what they believe, you know, needs to be changed. Because I recall when the Government Review Commission reported their findings here a number of years ago, they had suggested changes in there as well. But I think, rather than try to do this piece by piece, you know, I think it would be beneficial if we did something of that nature. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. I didn't want to put the cart in front of the horse and predispose anything because it was going to be a new election come January 2nd. But if I'm reelected president, that's what I planned on doing, and I didn't say that. So...
Well, great minds think alike, then.
So, thank you very much, Councilman.
This is a campaign speech.
No, that's, no, that's not a campaign speech. If there's a, if it is, it's the shortest one in history. So, it's a new world record. Notification of contracts, 12889-23.
A communication summarizing approved executive actions for the month of November 2023.
Is there a motion to approve?
Receiving.
Okay. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Is there any public comment on general items?
We have four individuals who signed up, the first of whom, Mike Sully, has indicated he will not be speaking. The second, therefore, is John Silvestri.
He's not here.
Next up would be Jacob Poole.
Good afternoon. I'm Jacob Poole, and I'm here to discuss child trafficking in the Pittsburgh area. Specifically, I'm in front of you as a person that was child abducted from Eastern Europe, from, and I'm in front of you in violation of international law, which means that people in the Pittsburgh area and Westmoreland County, Allegheny County, went to Eastern Europe behind the Iron Curtain, when it was being destabilized in the 90s by force, and brought me here as a child by force. And I'm in front of you in violation of international law. And I've been here alone, isolated in Pittsburgh area ever since in violation of international law, because I'm in front of you as a forced, moved here person, as a child from Eastern Europe, being forced, performed forced labor since I was a child in Westmoreland County, Allegheny County, for the last 27 years. So again, I'm Jacob Poole. My previous name was Jolt Levanta Jacob from Eastern Europe. I was brought to America in 1996 from a facility where I was with hundreds to thousands of children in Eastern Europe. After the Berlin Wall collapse, Czechoslovakia was breaking up, Romania, Hungary, and Yugoslavia were having civil wars. I was in a facility run by the Heinz Foundation, connected to the Bethlehem communities in Lincoln, Pennsylvania, connected to organizations, charities in Eastern Europe, using church funding and taxpayer money to funnel expertise and money over there to essentially collect thousands of children whom I was with, and I am in the Pittsburgh area now. I've been here since, for 27 years, since I was pretty much a minor child, since I was a little kid. And this is how I'm here. I'm kept alone, medically hurt, intensely, with intensive pain all the time, confused and disoriented. And I was child transported here by myself from Eastern Europe with the name Jolt Levanta Jacob. I was at the University of Pittsburgh, then at PNC Bank, then generally go past from one location to the other, and then one apartment building to the next, all the while just given enough money for food and just basic sustenance, even though I was given PhDs and advanced degrees, and I was forced to interact with other European visitors and students from Poland, Norway, Germany, Hungary, all those areas, and told them I was child abducted here in the 90s when the Iron Curtain collapsed. And I was with thousands of children whom I haven't seen since the 90s, who are all being prepared just like me to be brought to the Pittsburgh area for exploitation. And they're probably all around here, being forced to perform slave labor, you know, alone, isolated, all over this county, and no one, no one is ever going to hear from them. I'll never have a normal life. I'm by myself. I was made like a farm animal to be brought here as a slave, and I'll never have a house or wife or children that I'll be fathering without force or being slave-bred like a farm animal, because I was literally taken as a child by force, away from our families and brought here by force for slave labor and exploitation. And that's just how I'm in front of you, in violation of international law. Jolt Levanta Jacob from Eastern Europe. And that's how my name would be displayed, as a function of diversity, by force and abduction from Eastern Europe. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob, City Council meets too, so you can go visit them as well.
I do, yeah.
Okay. Just making sure. Rachel Nunes?
Rachel Nunes is the last one.
Can you get her a ticket, please? It's Nunes. Thank you. Rachel Nunes, I'm the Executive Director of the Thomas Merton Center. We're a peace and justice organization that's been operating in Pittsburgh for 50 years. We've been doing a lot of work with unhoused community recently and those that work with them as well. I wanted to share some community feedback regarding the city and county Code Blue Action Plan. I was at Second Avenue Commons last week for the first run of the plan, along with some other members of the community who were also there last night. And although it seemed like things ran smoothly, we were surprised not that, not as many of our shelterless neighbors were there. We found that a lot of folks hadn't heard about the plan at all. And if they did, they were hesitant for a variety of reasons. We received feedback from folks on the streets that dogs aren't allowed to come in with their owners despite pets being in extreme risk in cold weather as well. Folks rely on these pets for a number of reasons, most notably for emotional support, living under the weight of homelessness or a tie to their life before becoming unhoused. Not only, sorry, not only did there seem to not be enough communication with the hundreds of people living outside about the plan, also, when folks presented to overflow at Second Ave Commons, staff weren't communicating with people about the plan very well. They were short with people, were flippantly responding to them, leaving them more confused and upset. I was able to talk to some of those folks after they had those interactions, and they were able to make a decision to get on the bus to... were able to make a decision to get on the bus ticket to Eamon for the evening. We know that the HAWK and outreach teams associated with it work hard to ensure our neighbors know about these resources. But from what I understand, the shelter where people were being told to present when Code Blue was in effect was not at that table, receiving the same information as other shelter administrators on the HAWK and, you know, taking part in developing a joint outreach strategy with the HAWK. And in circumstances like this, matters of literal life or limb, it's crucial that shelter staff have all the information they need in order to provide it to people seeking emergency shelter, and that they be compassionate above all. Our neighbors lost a massive resource with the closure of the Smithfield Shelter, and the stop gas solution isn't perfect by any means, but ensuring that communication is clear at all levels, down to, you know, staff and the people living outside, most importantly, is so, so important and can be lifesaving. I hope that in the coming weeks, that community can receive some sort of report back from the city and county's perspective, as well as plans to better the communication issues we're seeing, and how to better serve and accommodate our unhoused neighbors under the Code Blue Action Plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's it.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Happy holidays, everyone.